I'm like, no.
Hold the quarter at seven o'clock.
No.
Everybody please stand. All right, approval minutes. So you guys had the opportunity to review the minutes. There is one correction you need to make. Uh, in the first minutes. These are ones that I created.
Yes.
You'll see that, uh, on your copies. Thursday, February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four at sixteen was struck out because these were minutes from Monday, March eighth to March fourth. Um, so correct that.
Okay.
Um, otherwise, do either of you have any corrections to the minutes as presented? Sure was crazy on Thursday when we figured out that.
The second ones are February twenty.
Yes, that's why it was driving us crazy.
Go ahead. Okay, so we have one for March fourth and then the twenty ninth.
Yes, and then also. The regular meeting that was on February twenty sixth.
Yeah, I'm good with the minutes that stay are presented. So, or with your.
Correction.
Correction, so I'll make a motion to accept the following minutes as presented with the correction for March fourth.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. One more thing before we do begin. I don't know if this was just something that you missed, but um, I know we've been incorporating public comment into both the beginning and the end.
Yeah, this was just, I figured we'd have some time.
Okay.
Okay. Before, or we have a busy schedule. Let me rephrase that.
Okay.
I'd rather get everything done and then we can have public comment.
Got it, okay.
Great.
I, I just didn't know if that was just like an oversight or because you know, I know the, the prior administration initiated that.
Yeah, no.
Do you know all the budget conversations going on? If anyone had any comments, I just wanted to.
Sure, yeah, no, I, the public comment's still at the end. I just made one to let us.
Okay.
I want to try and get us out.
Understood, understood, but then moving forward, will it be?
Uh, yeah, I'll, we'll have it back. Front and back. With that taken care of, refunds, payments and transfers, there are several transfers. For us today.
We got one, two, three, four, five.
That's transfers. Okay. Yes, okay. Yes, so. It's in there. Uh, they're all two. No, that's transfers. Okay, so. Yeah, I know it's on there. Um, so Frank Linder or Jacob Linder of one eighty-five Emmanuel Church Road, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Frank Linder or Jacob Linder at one eighty-five Emmanuel Church Road, two hundred ninety dollars and forty-eight cents. Frank Linder or Jacob Linder, one eighty-five Emmanuel Church Road, three hundred and ten dollars and forty-nine cents. Orn Y Marvin of nine hundred Pacific Street Apartment fifteen ten, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. And Lauren Y Marvin, nine hundred Pacific Street Apartment fifteen ten, two hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
She added to it.
Yeah, so it might have been that we had to pull it and then.
Got it.
Just did not put it back in. Um, the reason for these transfers is. Two of those individuals, well, it's a little bit of a tricky situation because two of those individuals are being charged tax by other municipalities.
Oh.
Um, car tax because they're either going to college or, and so.
Okay.
It becomes tricky fighting cities where they're getting taxed because. And so in the. The goodness of our hearts, we're not gonna tax them twice for the same vehicle.
Is that what happened in one eighty-five?
He's been getting.
Three refunds.
Yeah.
So is that for three separate vehicles?
No, it's all the same vehicle. It's just. They've been spotted on their college campus and getting hit with a tax or something to that effect, often enough that. Cities that they're in.
So the. So the primary is car register?
Yeah.
So this is their primary.
And we've tried to sort it out, but it's more difficult to get the other municipality to fix it.
So was it a double payment then?
Yeah, they were getting.
So they paid here in K-Town and then wherever.
Yeah.
They are.
They were getting billed.
I see.
And so.
But they're, they're registered and.
Yeah, it's, it's a complicated situation, so.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious the whole, whole thing with the process.
Yeah, I don't know. It's, it's one of those new things because it, I think the municipality that is charging them is using a new like. Scan the car, uh.
I see. And they're like, oh, you've been here for.
X amount of hours, however many days and.
Just, just in terms of like a process question, then like. You know, not, not to get too far down this rabbit hole, but just in terms of, so. They're basically paying the other municipality, so then we don't.
We're not getting the revenue, right, yeah.
So. Even though the car is.
Next is somewhere.
Here.
You would have to follow up with Michelle a little bit more about the back of the situation.
To know what somebody's getting.
Yeah, someone, yeah. Yeah, it's the other municipality that's getting the money because it's just. You would have to get more information for.
I, you know.
I just don't disagree.
I, yeah, I just kind of.
Yeah.
Dig a little.
Yeah.
I just want to understand how it would be, because. Because that won't be the first time nor the last.
I, I have no doubt that this will be the case and so, you know, this is the first time it's happened.
Okay.
So, um. We're gonna kind of figure it out as we go, we go, and unfortunately.
Yeah.
We're the ones to figure it out as we go.
Okay.
Um, Michelle is kind of in the same boat because I know she's been going back and forth with the other municipalities.
But just as long as I don't want to get into the middle of some dispute between the town of Killingworth and.
Other town and then.
Yeah. If at some point, I can get to the bottom of this, but if the car is registered in Killingworth.
Yeah, I, I'll.
And some, if another town wants to pay taxes, that's between the resident and what town their.
I guess just having some.
Car is registered and they can go fight it with the other town.
Yeah, just some clarity, you know, so to take the liability away from.
Or they can go register the, register their car in another town.
Yeah.
But that's not between.
Yeah.
That's between them and the other town.
I think it's to cover us.
To cover us, you know, in the town, I think maybe to dig, might be worth to dig just a little.
Yeah.
You know, and kind of see. Be the first or.
Yeah.
But.
I can follow up with Michelle for more information.
Yeah, just so we kind of know.
Because if it's, uh. Okay. If it's. So we can table this for today. If you would like.
Are, are both of those the same?
Yes, both of those are kind of the same situation. They're getting taxed by the municipal.
I just want to make sure that what we're doing. I, I know it may seem trivial and it's a.
No, I understand that, but.
But I just want to get a little bit more from you, like.
Why did this happen? How did this happen?
If it's between another town and these individuals. If the car is indeed registered in the state of Connecticut and, and address in Killingworth.
Why are they getting taxed by the municipality?
Regardless of where they go park the piece of property.
I, I, again, I don't have all of the details.
Sure, and maybe there's something very simple that is not registered here anymore and it's registered there for the last six months and this is six, who knows?
Let me ask Michelle.
I just think for process.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, perfect.
And again, I, I think it's. You know, it's not that we want to hold that up, you know, it's just, you know, I, I think it's our due diligence, you know, and as a board. You know, I'd say like.
Just understand, just all right.
That's all.
Yeah.
It could be a very simple answer and it likely is, but. It could be some state statute that maybe we don't know.
Very simple answer that Michelle told me and I just forgot.
That's all good too.
That's a hundred percent possible. Um, okay, so we can table that for the moment.
Yeah.
Um. Budget, this is about the budget we're in.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Not the budget we're preparing.
Okay, okay.
So. Um, I talked to Gina today. Um, you also have a report from Michelle about, uh, taxes that have been collected.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We are on target for our budget for this year. Uh, if Gina wants to weigh in a little bit more, she's free to do so.
What did you want me to do? What did you want me to do a little more?
If we're, if what I said is accurate, that we're on target for the budget, okay?
Yes, yes, so, yes, we're on target.
Okay, and there's no other, nothing kind of sticking out in the red right now, Gina? In terms of the current budget overages?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, we're gonna have some issues in a few places. I, I, off the top of my head, I think. Maybe the assessor's office is gonna come in a little bit skewed, um, but overall, we're, we're well positioned, especially with the mild winter, so.
Yeah. Okay. Good. No other questions than on appointments. So we still need names for the ethics committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um. To try and form and. Get the technical word for making them actually do the work of the committee.
Seat, seat.
Yes. Um, we do have. Two positions to add though. Um, I believe you both got emails from Jim Duffield. Um, about park and rec. Um, this is a position that was unseated. Um, and so, like to make a motion to appoint Christopher D. Swiss to the Park and Recreation Commission for a term beginning. Oh, one oh one, twenty twenty-three and ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just, um.
Y O one oh one, twenty twenty-three.
Is that just the term?
That's just the term. He was filling in the position that, um, Brian Blair vacated, so. He's for the term, not a new term starting whenever.
And then shame on me, I, I, he's an R and I, I don't know just a little bit in the background, did you?
No, we got all that background from Jim Duffield, um.
Yeah, sure.
Other than going into those.
Your vacancy, right?
Yes. Um, okay, then hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the second one is important position as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We have been operating without a Z E O and a inland wetlands enforcement officer.
Mm-hmm.
Um. For a few months now, uh, Linda Keith Rubatell was interviewed by myself and by Tom Hogarty and. Paul McGinnis, um, and they're planning in zoning capacities, uh, a few weeks ago, thought that she was the best choice for zoning position and inland wetlands. And so our part of this intricate dance is appointing her to. Uh, the inland wetlands as the inland wetlands enforcement officer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, and I have a little additional language of pending consultation with the inland wetlands. Water, water horses commission, um.
Okay. That term ends. This year.
Yes, really, it's.
Two-year term, how long is that?
It is a term, and this is where the intricate dance gets very intricate. Um, it used to be for, I believe in charters laid out as a single-year term. However, language was changed to allow that position to be. An indeterminate term or rather determined by. The committees and commissions. This just puts us to the end of the year as, um. Leo originally would have been.
Okay.
Depending upon his appointment to that term, so. Okay.
Yeah, I, you know, I. Why don't we make a motion and then just bring up, I just have a question for the discussion, you know, about her, so, um. I'll make that motion. Um, to appoint Linda. Uh, correct. Keith, Keith, Keith Ru- Rubatelli. As with, uh, inland wetlands enforcement officer for the term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second, ending consultation.
Ending consultation with.
Okay.
Inland wetlands. Um. I know with. In discussions with Tom Hogarty about this position.
Hmm.
Um, you know, he, he provided was just some insight, you know, about it and kind of what it takes, and it seems that this position is a bit more involved. Than, you know, let's say like, uh, you know, uh, other commissions, not to pick on open space, like open space, for example. I know there are certain like qualifications that have to be met, certain trainings, you know, that have to be met. Um, is this individual kind of aware, you know, of those and kind of what's expected, you know, in that role?
Yes.
You know, I, in, in, in the call, my discussions with Leo, you know, I, you know, I, I know he was kind of running into certain of these challenges. Um, but I just wanted to make sure she was at the forefront, you know, is aware of kind of what's expected. With this sort of role, um, and what those realistic expectations are.
So she had the qualifications in the past, um. For, I can't recall off the top of my head, a, a certain period of time, um. And she was on her hometown's, uh, planning and zoning commission for several years. I forget the exact term, but it was longer, a longer period, kind of span of time.
You did mention there was kind of like a hiring committee, so Tom. And yourself and others kind of.
We interviewed her and, you know, poked and prodded her about her thoughts, how she would approach enforcement, the realities of the position.
Um, I know, I always kind of like this dance of trying to fill. These positions, you know, on the one hand, it's finding people that are willing to do it, but then.
Yeah.
With certain roles, you kind of want some.
And she's aware of the qualifications and she is happy to make sure that qualifications, uh, get filled. Um, there is a bit of leeway in terms of making sure that she gets this proper certification with Casio, but she's already been through the process.
Okay.
Aside from the very last step, and that was just because she had a better off her, waiting for her at the state that she had to take.
Sure.
Yeah, obvious reasons.
So only my kind of, you know, questions about knowing kind of the background of that and.
You know, what she's ready to start, um, and.
And then when does it go before inland wetlands? When do they?
Uh, we'll have it before them by tomorrow and. Okay, I think it'll be copacetic.
Okay.
Hopefully, great.
So, yeah. If there's any, you know, kind of like red flags that arise, you know, could you just maybe let Joel and I, you know, put us on the radar?
Yeah.
You kind of think we're like pseudo hiring committee?
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it, you know?
Hi Bill, thank you for joining us. Please mute yourself.
I'm, I'm sorry, Eric.
Please mute yourself.
Thank you.
Um. With that said, all that said, um. We have a motion on the table.
Yeah.
All those in favor of, uh, appointing Linda to the inland wetlands enforcement officer position. They say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed unanimously. Moving forward expeditiously, uh, department reports, um, you have in your packets. And I just went through and double-checked that, um. Reports from building land use departments and, um, and clerk's office regarding transfers and. Uh, the permits being done in town. We'll get to you next.
Don't worry.
This might be a presumptuous question, but have we started using that permitting software yet?
No, because we haven't approved the funding to implement the software yet, so.
I know that question, question was pretty sure, but it's kind of curious.
The oxen have not been attached to that cart. It hasn't been struck by lightning yet.
Shame on me for putting that cart for the horse.
This is nothing new for us, um. Board of Education.
All right, since you have a lot, long, long agenda, I'll make it brief. Um, so we had some, uh. For our February meeting, so we, uh, started as we always do now with the Cougar Pride, uh, so we had, um. Uh, si- excuse me, our high school robotics team competed in their third competition, did very well. We had, uh, high school musicians accepted to the Southern Regional Festival. Uh, we had two students, uh, Shiley, I'm gonna butcher her last name, Emi, Emig, and Caitlin Kuhta for their, their film was accepted at the Eastern Connecticut State University's High School Film Festival. Um, and finally, kudos to our, uh, curriculum coordinator and, uh, reading coach Jennifer Biermunder and Judy Naka for providing. Insights to other districts about our state-approved reading program. So I told you about the reading program being accepted last time. One of only seventeen districts in the state of eighty-six districts that got our reading program not only accepted, but added to the approved curriculum for the state, which is fantastic. We had five or six districts reach out to us and say, how'd you do it? So we had, we hosted two visiting days where, uh, Jennifer and Judy hosted visiting reading specialists to show. And they actually went to the elementary schools and watched it in, in progress and talked to them, so.
And then, just for clarity, this is the, the, the reading program that H K, they were able to successfully opt out of, correct?
Right, so a couple of years ago, the state passed a statute that said you must follow science of reading standards. Here's the approved curriculum. If you want to use something different, write to us with an exception, and a fair number of our districts. Wrote with an exception, again, we were one of the only ones that were accepted and. The curriculum that we chose and defended was then added to the list because it wasn't originally on the list. Yeah, and it's a, it's a, it's a correct collection of three different products together in one pack, worked together in one package.
Years ago.
Yeah, yeah, it's fantastic. Uh, okay, so, um. A little bit about the high school, so that we, uh, we, uh, for the first time approved the opportunities book at the high school. This is all the course options that the students have when they sign up. But a key part of the opportunities book is the graduation requirements, so we are now the proud owners of, as every other, of other in the state, other district. Four different high school graduation requirements for, for each of the four graduating classes in the high school right now, so. Freshmen, sophomores, juniors and seniors each have different graduation requirements based on rolling state. Requirements for each. Some of them are kind of small, like, uh, let me see my notes, so, um. The class of twenty twenty-five, which is, which is this current year's juniors. Uh, every student has to either prove that they have filled out the FAFSA, so this is the, the application for financial aid. This is a state law now that next year when you graduate, you have to either prove you filled out the FAFSA. Or apply for a waiver that you did not, that you choose not to.
Hmm.
Um, it, I, I, we're probably not the target district for this rule, but the bottom line is a lot of money goes un, unclaimed. A lot of financial aid goes unclaimed for, for families that would otherwise qualify. I think there are a lot of families that say, oh, we can't afford to go to college, never mind, but if you fill out the FAFSA, you would find out that you get money, so it's. Again, we are probably not the target, um, type of district, but. So that's twenty twenty-five. Um, starting in twenty twenty-six. Um, that is our new, uh, history curriculum. So we're in the middle of transitioning over history curriculum, so we had world history, then American history junior year. And then, uh, uh, a, a kind of a, I, um. You could take electives in your senior year, so choose different things. Where the state mandated that more work on civics needs to be treated, taught, so we condensed our world history. Um, and then moving American history down to sophomore year, so sophomores will now take A push. A P U S history, which is reportedly the hardest A P class in the, in the whole curriculum. They'll take that sophomore year. Junior year is a new contemporary issues and civics class, and then senior year will then be an elective, so. Right now, we've got half of our high school in the old and half of our high school in the new, and it's making scheduling, uh, kind of interesting.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's, that's based on state, and then finally, the, the, that's the current sophomores. Current freshmen, um, also have a mandatory personal finance class that they must take for graduation. We've always had a personal finance class. It's been optional now for the new freshmen. It's mandatory for them to graduate, so every, you know, and each of these are based on state requirements. So that's fun, a fun opportunities, but. And confusing for parents who have a couple of kids in the, in the district. Um, another thing we did was, um, one of the immense responsibilities of the Board of Education is to have, be. Uh, oversight on expulsion hearings. Um, and so we voted, if there's ever a situation where you can't either get enough Board of Ed members for an expulsion hearing. Or there's a conflict of interest in it, yeah, so that they're not appropriate for Board of Ed members. Um, we voted to, um, as a back, backup, have a, um, a here, an impartial hearing officer that the superintendent can go to if. The Board of Ed, for whatever reason, is not able to function. Before, we didn't have that. So in the, in the state mandated timeline between the alleged occurrence, you know, notification, all the things scheduling, it has to be ten days, ten, ten school days. So it's not very much time to work all this stuff out, and so this way the superintendent has a, an option if that's.
With that, Kathy, is there, um. So that officer that kind of takes that role if the board can't come to a decision about an expulsion. Is that already, you know, is that an extra position? Is that something that the district is gonna pay? Or repay for? How does that?
Yeah, let me clarify, so the, the hearing officer would act in the Board of Ed, in place of the Board of Ed, if the Board of Ed, for some reason. Wasn't able to, uh, to, uh, fulfill its, yeah, not that they have a hearing and they couldn't come to a conclu- conclusion, but that they can't serve for some reason, like, let's say. Um, I'll, I'll pick on Suzanne because she doesn't have children, okay? Let's say Suzanne, Suzanne's high school student, um, you know, does a, a potentially exp- expellable offense. All of us would have a confliving, a conflict of interest to serve on an expulsion, potential conflict of interest to serve on, on a expulsion hearing. If it was our chair's child, right, you could, our, 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 you know, I don't want to make up a, a worse story than that, but that's.
Yeah.
You know, for example, so then you would say, we need somebody neutral. You know, let's do a, 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 a hearing officer instead of the Board of Ed members, yeah. I, I haven't seen it happen in my six years. It's probably unlikely to happen, but. Um, the timeline is so short that our superintendent said, can we put this in place just in case it doesn't? Yeah, or, you know, if they can't, you, you need at least three board members, let's say for some reason scheduling, there's eleven of us. But if you can't get three, then that would be another reason to easily get them. So, um, you know, the master, the capital master plan, just to re- remind everyone, we looked at a number of comprehensive solutions. Those were pretty gnarly and large. Um, we're now looking at, we're investigating further, kind of smaller options, and that now is with the superintendent and our new, um, uh, facilities, uh, director, so they're. Working through with the architect and the, and Arcadus to come up with options for those, so more on that, but they're, they're in the middle of budget season right now too, so they're, um.
Like timeline where we'll know kind of more.
That's a great, I, I wish I could answer that question definitively. The new finance director just started in the middle of December and he inherited a. A budget that he didn't build, and so he's up to his eyeballs in trying to make sense of it.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly, so once he comes up for air, um.
Though I have to say, based on the. Uh, his conduct at the last meeting, he is well up to the challenge, so.
He's extremely knowledgeable. He's, he's a breath of fresh air in the finance, in the facilities area for us.
Yeah.
In the finance area too, but in the facilities area for sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed, so I'm assuming what, I have every expectation that when it comes, it'll be. Good and solid and, and we'll have a lot to talk. Um, and there's really no one else, like, if we do a more, a less comprehensive plan, a more localized plan. A lot of it would fall in the facilities department to oversee, so it's, we can't really have somebody else do it. It, it wouldn't make any sense. Um, okay, a few other updates, but in, in live time, I, I'll just say that, um. Uh, we've begun our budget process, as you guys well know, you sat in last week. Um, so, so far, just for the public, the superintendent has put together his proposed budget. We're now having budget workshops where we, uh, we, we basically break it up into. Um, we, we look at different school, different schools, you know, one at a time, and then we look at facilities and district things. We're about to do the high school, I believe, tomorrow night. It's Wednesday, Wednesday. Tomorrow night, we're gonna do this, the high school, and then move on from there. So we, we have this workshop process where we ask a bunch of questions and we understand things, and then. And then, at some point, we'll work with the superintendent and then we'll propose a board budget, but that will then go directly. So this is where we're in the process. So, so far, we have the superintendent. And everything else can be found, I'll just say again, on our website, RSC seventeen dot org. Go shopping, all the fun stuff. You have insomnia, wanted to click around down here.
Great, that's how you're gonna sleep, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Not so great, but. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Whole business. Now we're to the prospective budget.
Here we go, guys.
There we go. So, you both received copies of the most up-to-date budget. As of. The seventh, so last Thursday. Had the time to review it. It includes all the changes that we discussed previously. Tonight, we are going to be putting our big rubber stamp on it to go to Board of Finance tomorrow. And. So yeah, are there any questions? Are there any?
I, I have a suggestion. And, you know, so all the Hawaiian sun, you know, I think kind of helped me to bake all of this stuff. So, you know, I, I, I think all of the meetings that we had, special meetings, were all really helpful, especially for. Someone like so, where all this is new to me, you know, I've just been trying to go through, and. I, I know relatively, it's a relatively small budget, but of course, it seems very large and daunting, um, in, in, in a way. So, one thing that I always kind of think about, it's, you know, I'm always kind of thinking of, you know. Ways that like we can improve like our process, and I got the idea like when we were going through our minutes. You know, and seeing our minutes. I wonder if we could just take the time today to go section by section. Just to kind of give the official, like, nod. So just to demonstrate a couple of things, like one that like as a board, we officially went through them all and gave the thumbs up. Which then, you know, nothing on Jamie, but I know Jamie does well in the minutes, but just so that it's reflected in the minutes. So since it's gonna be like our final rubber stamp.
Oh, you're talking about section and by section.
You know, I, I don't think it will take very long for us to go through. Okay, general government, check. Um, Board of Elections, check. Um, and I think if those gets captured, then, you know, because when I'm going through the minutes, I'm like, okay, do. And then, you know, I, and I, I think going from there will kind of just help, again, like we, we raised a lot of the discussion. But I know we kind of dedicated a little more conversation to certain pieces and not to others. So I don't know how you guys would feel just going, you know, chunk by chunk and just being like. Good, no, let's do this.
I'm comfortable doing that.
Yeah, that's, it's, so this budget really reflects.
All the changes that we have made.
Discussed, right? So there's really nothing new.
There's nothing new in this.
There shouldn't be any way, any sort of surprises or anything.
No, you did receive, just for clarity's sake. You did receive that one request from Park and Rec on, I think, Friday. We're gonna tell Board of Finance that.
Like, we just received this.
We just received this, here you go.
That's the.
Rather than calculate that in, we could calculate that in tonight, but.
So before we deliver to Board of Finance, I like.
I'm comfortable, I don't know what, what, which way is a little bit more efficient. If you section, if I go all the way to the bottom of that budget. See all of those, those main. Yep, sections. Are you comfortable with going through?
Those individual lines, the general government, public safety highway, or do you wanna just add the chunks?
Yeah, I mean, maybe since this is my first time and our first time. You know, maybe just for, you know, exercise, you know, just, and again, just kind of document that. And then maybe next year, we can.
Oh, I, I understand.
Just so we can assure, be like, yeah, of course we went through it all.
It's a gut check. We're doing a unit check. I understand.
Basically, yeah, yeah. I, I, I don't think much is gonna change, you know, I might point out some things, you know, but again, I think just as kind of like a. An official rubber stamp that it would be, you know, helpful, such as this is our, our first time.
Yeah, no, I understand. So, let's start off with general government. We'll start on page one. And this is why I had public comments at the end and not the beginning as well.
So, I just wanted to bring that up and be like, hey, wait, because Nancy did such a great job in getting both the beginning and the end. I'd like to continue Nancy's legacy.
Okay, all right.
But yeah, so, so for this first section, you know, so what, what I'm looking at, you know, from general government to office expense. You know, again, like I, I really don't have any, you know, changes, you know, to this at all. And, and, and really, again, kind of why I'm bringing this up, you know, again, it's more kind of also that, you know. It's new for me, I'm a little bit naive to these things, you know, so even like the BOs adjustments, I know we went through a different. Kind of couple of versions. I guess I didn't necessarily know what the, that P word is, like the process word was, you know, I know we kind of generally talked about. And I think in those, in just speaking in generalities, when I was going over the minutes, I was like, okay, we, we spoke in generalities, maybe kind of. Being more specific, like, oh, okay, so the, when, when I mentioned the selectmen stipend, when there was that a bit of an increase. I didn't know if me just saying, yeah, take it off was sufficient enough, or if I said, no, okay, write down, we're gonna remove that. Okay, we all agree, we're gonna remove that from the. So I think next year when we do this, I'd like to, you know, go line by line, and then just be like, okay, oh yeah, all right, guys, we made that adjustment, right?
No, I understand what you're getting at. So, but you're happy with this first section as presented?
A learning curve, right? And I know we told you, but, but for, yeah, but for all of that, you know, again, I think all of this is, you know, um. Appropriate, I really don't have a lot of, you know, um, comments on there. The, the, the requests of like, you know, for example, the office supplies that, you know, and again, I'm just looking at the percent difference, you know, it's certainly possible that BOF will kind of. Go into further scrutiny of that, but I think at least in this section, it's, I, I think we're good on general government.
Probate court had no changes to theirs.
Yeah, and that's kind of just general.
Board of Elections, as we discussed, is largely driven by early voting. I don't think we had any issues with meeting our statutory requirements, especially since the end of this month is early voting, so.
So do we know, and, and again, not to nitpick or anything, but just so, you know, mo- moving forward, so we know what it, what it's gonna look like. Because we're gonna do again this in twenty.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, it's a year bu- one-year budget.
Right. Um, I'm just kind of curious to, you know, one, will state aid kick in at all? You know, because for, for small town, twenty K is. That, that sneeze at. Um, but also to, I, again, not to scrutinize each and every line, you know, but if this is something that the town is going to inherit. Maybe the level of scrutiny across these different items, you know, might need to be a, a bit closer looked at.
So, to take those questions in order. On the first one, the Secretary of State's office is pushing the legislature to fully fund. Early voting, the whole process. That has been made clear multiple times. Whether that will pass in the current General Assembly, current year of the General Assembly. Who knows? It's kind of one of those things that always, when it comes to spending matters, what the General Assembly will do is, you know. It's not like looking into a clouded crystal ball, but sometimes you get a few. Winners out into foul territory. I don't have an answer. But the answer is, there.
We're on the hook for it, we gotta do it.
We're on the hook for it, we gotta do it. There's work to be done to mitigate some of the impact that it has on municipality budgets. But don't count on it at this point. Second question is. To whether we'll, you know, look and adjust based on what we see. Yes, of course, this is a best. Guesstimate of what the expenses will be based on what we're required to provide for early voting. What we're. What our statutory requirements are, the number of days that people are allowed to partake in early voting. Uh, the helpful reminder is it's four, four, seven, fourteen, I believe. Because that is easy to remember. The joke there is that it's not easy to remember at all. And so, it may change. This is everybody's first year in Connecticut doing early voting. Town clerks and town registrars have a lot of questions for Secretary of State's office. We're fortunate in that, uh, the first instance of early voting is not exactly the most dire of elections. So, um, it's the presidential primary, that's why I'm saying that. It's basically over at this point.
Because I'm just looking, you know, like, you know, so with, with the, you know, we're looking at a hundred, again, it's percentage, but a hundred and forty-two percent for the early voting. I'm assuming that's just time needed by the poll workers to be staffed.
Yep, that is a body sitting in this room for, I forget the number of hours, it's what? Ten to six or something like that. Yeah, so.
Yeah, again, I think there's not much we can do there, so I am, I'm good with that, with that section.
All right.
Again, Board of Finance, it's, you know, looks. You know, the, the one that's kind of there is the publication of the annual budget, but again, you know, it's, I know all that stuff. The, so the, the annual capital transfers. I know generally can be up to one and a half mil.
Believe that's the correct number.
I know, there's kind of like, you know, and of course, if you increase that number, you're.
Increasing.
So it's kind of.
Basically, you're trying, if you're increasing that number, you're trying to spare your general fund a little bit. Or trying to reduce what debt servicing.
And it looks like one oh six has been a pretty constant number.
One million sixty.
And, and that's still not set, you know, is that, who has the, is, is it the Board of Finance have the final say over? That number, or can we, just as in terms of process, can we have the Board of Selectmen?
So the final say is the town through town meeting and referendum, correct? But Board of Finance will take it up. Obviously, we'll work with Board of Finance to set final numbers. Why thereby presenting information or just. Talking with them. But ultimately, once this budget leaves our hands tonight. The only component left in budgeting for our purposes will be addressing the multi-year plan. And basically just filling out the last year in that. Which is ten years out from now, so twenty thirty-four, thirty-five. Tendency fund is just, it's a line there for when, you know. Tendency on construction projects or what have you. Grant writer, some other thing, we need to expend money on a grant writer for something. Usually try to do as much grant writing in-house, and so that hasn't been used sometime. But it's useful to keep some of these lines open. Assessor.
Yeah, with the assessor, I, I, I mentioned at the last meeting, this one was kind of. The most murky to me, um, and I, I kind of wanna apologize just punting it off to the Board of Finance. But, um, and having them in, you know, I, I, I kind of wish I had a follow-up with them, actually. But, um, just kind of looking at these numbers, you know, the assessor salary, of course, makes the most sense to me at two point. You know, two point eight percent in- increase. The one that's still, you know, and I, I know they kind of told us the positions are changing here. Do we know kind of, you know, any more information about, you know, this hire, you know, because I see the comments here that I, I think either Gina or yourself included. New full-time hire assistant or clerk, and then this, this move to expense to capital.
So, let me address those quickly. So, right now, we'll be assistant assessor, serving limited hours in sort of a.
Who's the gentleman sitting by the door?
Yes. And so, the idea is moving him into that consulting position, because that fits where he is. And moving towards this full, um, assistant assessor position slash clerk. With the idea of if we go for a clerk, then you would see them. Develop into an assistant assessor, or you reevaluate as time goes on. Part of. This is part of that changing. Position that, you know, we, you both were provided, uh, the explanation of the positions, historical positions, um, by assessor. How do I phrase this? That would be that's accurate. The. In the last few years, there has been a transition of the assistant assessor to the assessor role. And so, a commiserate transition from. The assessor to this assistant assessor slash part-time, uh, who's scaled down his hours as the assessor has taken more. And so, this more reflects. Historically, what was had by the office in this clerk assistant assessor position. And also where the office is sort of recalibrating to after this sort of weird transition period that. Got interrupted by COVID and a whole bunch of other factors that have.
So the, I, I, I forget the, the woman's name who was sitting.
Shawna.
So was, so was Shawna the assistant assessor? And the gentleman was the assessor, and basically they're.
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, yes.
Okay. So now with the assistant assessor being vacant as a result of her going to the assessor. Then that's where that new full-time hire assistant clerk piece comes in.
Yes.
And no one had, has there been any sort of like. Interviewing or?
No, not yet, because this position technically is open.
Forming a position here within the budget then to hire.
It, it's an interesting thing, we're kind of reforming the position, but yes. To kind of get to the question of that you're asking.
Okay.
It's a position that has existed, very briefly didn't exist. Due to circumstance.
I, I mean, at, at least, you know, you know, from the information here and, and the, the background that was provided, I mean, it seems these values are kind of within the ballpark of. Would it would appear to be, you know, I mean, yeah, you're looking.
There to other towns.
Two hundred and fifty-eight point, you know, two hundred and fifty-eight point seven percent increase, but it's because it was budgeted. Twelve and then going up to forty-three, so having that little bit context, and then the consultant being strucken out, and then, so.
In this instance, it might be better to look for at the assistant assessor in the actual column from twenty-two, twenty-three, because that is.
Okay. So then this seventy-two hundred that was moved to the capital, that will basically be for the assistant that they were discussing.
Yes, the revale consultant, so you know, double-check their numbers and, or the numbers for revaluation. Um, because currently, we, if you go down to our capital, we have a hundred thousand assessed to capital for revale. This would be a component of that.
Yeah, I'm good on that, on that section. And again, the, the assessors' expenses. I know things are, products and paper and printing are getting more expensive. You know, how that can be refined, or how much it can be refined. Certainly, those numbers are kind of in the ballpark.
And some of it is just, you know, part of it is training. You know, part of it is training for potential training for new assistants. Maintaining licensing, that sort of thing, so.
Okay, so good on that section. So the tax collector salary, yep.
Yes.
So then the tax collector clerk. That's a new hire in a lower step.
Yes.
Okay, so I see that. And again, you know.
Factoring in the actual person that will be going into the position.
Okay. Got it.
Because they have been hired and they start. Soon.
Okay. You know, I, 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 you know, I'm also looking at the certification courses here, you know, but I, I understand that logic of. You know, training, it's kind of inherent and, and, and all that stuff, so. The treasurer stipend deputy, that's good. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. Town council, I'm also okay knowing with all of the.
Yeah, let's keep that number where it is.
Yeah, kind of stuff that's going on, you know, I'm sure that will definitely go over. This town engineer line, so with the fees. That's for the, that bridge issue that we discussed a couple of years ago, correct?
Yes, and there's no, there's no change in this. This is just.
So even though it goes eighteen, three, two, then to twenty-five, it's still indicating that it's a zero?
Right, because in this instance, the budgeted amount and the requested amount are the same, so we haven't hit our limit on. And this is also work that can. Take its time a little bit. Because. It, it's one of the smaller bridges. Town.
Good with that. I'm, I'm good with the town clerk, you know, the assistant town clerk. All of that stuff is very reasonable to me. Building official salary, you know. Seems realistic to me.
And again, as a reminder, look at the actual versus budget for this one, because this is one of those ones that's a little kinky.
But I think that was helpful having those discussion about, you know, the hours, you know, and all sorts of this. Stuff, you know, not necessarily for me to nitpick on individual lines, you know, but. You know, when we're looking at like a seven percent, you know, my brain is kind of like, if I can. Operating, you know, in maintenance, all that stuff, I mean, it just seems, you know.
It is what it is in a lot of ways. Water testing is up just because I think the state is increasing the changes and so. What we require to test.
Line going out, who still uses telephones? The duplicating expense, those duplicating expenses, is, is that, is that being driven by state statute?
No. This is a question that Gina, we're gonna need your input on.
Yeah, I'm here. I mean, this, the duplicating is, maybe it's not described, uh, and the. Few years ago, well, more than a few years ago, we blended a couple of lines. It's, it's paper. It's service contracts and lease payments, all relates relating to having copiers in, in the, in the town hall.
Oh, okay, got it. Oh, so yeah, I, I think I remember I did ask this.
Service contracts, paper and lease payments.
Okay, thank you, Gina. Electricity.
Gotta keep the lights on.
Gotta keep those, gotta keep those lights on. It looks like the, so that's the new E O C, old garage, dog pound.
Yeah.
Town office building. Streetlights.
There, there are other electric, electricity lines in, like Parmley, there, it's their line item for their two. Eversource accounts and Park and Recs hits theirs. This is a, an artifact from years ago. It's very difficult to get. Eversource to rename each of these accounts, so they have, you know, you're sort of better off to look at all of them except for streetlights is pretty well isolated. And we're able to isolate their food pantry, but the rest of them are kind of a mishmash of all the different. What do you call meters? They're right here on the campus. And I did do a double check this morning that I, I still think the thirty-five five is a reasonable number for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So this encompasses a large chunk of our electricity needs, but not all of the electricity needs. Because Park and Rec is covered under their budget, Fire Company is covered under their budget. Library internal.
I, I, I don't necessarily want to pick on the food pantry, you know, because the food pantry does such wonderful stuff for our town, but.
Yeah, we have a question. I, I was talking with Nancy Formic earlier today.
You know, again, it's like, you know, if, if they need thirty-two, then that's what they need, you know.
Yeah, it, it's a question for them as well, because. Yes. We need to look at it because it's probably be as energy as sufficient, efficient as possible and.
I'm also thinking, you know, a thousand bucks here, a thousand there.
I know, I know.
I know, it, you know, it's, we're kind of already there, but I think, you know, it, you know. Being, trying to be responsible.
Yeah, and I don't think it's, you know, like.
Sitting with their open one day a week. But again, just kind of one of these things that like I wanted to convey and communicate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That it's like, hey, we kind of identified, maybe there's something like, you know, could you cut that line by?
Yeah, it, it's more of a. I guess the question would be how energy efficient is that building just in terms of insulation and?
And it might not be all that great.
Probably isn't all that great, just speaking to the quality of that building. But. Yes, it is a. It's a point of notice. And it's not, you know.
This is the board, I wanted us to be like.
Yes.
Hey, we see this.
And I think it's been relatively consistent since it was the old trooper. Home. In terms of. What it's used for. I don't know how many more ridges that have been added. I'm talking in terms of the amount of electricity that's probably used. I don't know per se. Dollar amount, obviously, it's gonna have gone up since these electricity costs have gone up.
But we, do we get to?
I'm not sure how energy efficient that building has been versus how energy efficient it has been made, what changes have been done, so.
Because one thing that, you know, at least I do. My home, I know many others do, is you're always kind of looking for that third party, like who has the cheapest. Can, does the town have any sort of ability?
Excuse me, yeah, we're already, we're, we're already there. We've already placed it, we placed it through C C M. They have a, like, they shop it for us. So we've done that for two or three different contracts. So we've done what we can in that, in that case.
You know, in general, where we kind of landed, just in terms of kilowatt per hour, just that, you know, again. Curiosity, kind of what we get, what a town would get.
I, I don't know, I'd have, I'd have to look. I'd have to look at the contract.
But again, just like.
I do have.
Kind of another one of these knobs that. Sorry, Gina, go ahead.
I do have five years or six years actually where I split out just that location. For what it's actually cost us, and I have kilowatt hours, which is different from kilowatts. And then the delivery service numbers paired to, and then what percentage of the delivery was to the total cost. I've tracked this stuff. I don't know how to read it sometimes, but kilowatt hours are different from kilowatts. And when we had someone come in from Eversource, when Nancy was there, I don't know if it was her first year or second. But we had this huge spike, and so we called Eversource and they came out and walked through the building and pretty much said. Yeah, no, there's nothing you can do here. So, and, and they pointed out of the difference between kilowatts and kilowatt hours, but really nothing else we can do. A lot of refrigeration.
Thank you, Gina.
Obviously, that's an area, and it's an area that we can look at where everybody is not just picking on the food pantry selected. Everybody, we can be more efficient and. Try and figure out how to offset those costs. It's just. Nice tiny little bill. There's so much energy.
Yeah, gotta keep that food cold.
Yeah, that's probably a big chunk of it.
Okay, so yeah, I'm, I'm definitely good with that. You know, the fire and causality insurance. Thank you. Fringe benefits. Good. And I see, you know, after our discussion of incorporating another F T E for the. Public Works, you know, then that's reflective of, you know, the medical dental. And I'm assuming that's also, so the, can you remind me what this twenty-three hundred was again, for the, for the pensions? What was? Gina, on the, the fringe benefits, so the defined contribution line, what's? That, that twenty-three hundred there, that adjustment, what does that reflect?
Two, two, two numbers. One is for the. Defined contribution plan that that is, I'm sorry, the defined benefit plan, and that is. What the actuary determines based on census and portfolio performance, that we are obligated to, to. Contribute to that plan, and the defined contribution is an estimate based on the people who are eligible to be in that plan. And four percent of their salary.
Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you, Gina.
Information technology.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of one thing that we. You know, discuss with the licensing software and all that stuff. So I'm okay with that. So general government, nine percent, you know, cost to run general government stuff. So, you know, with inflation and that nine percent, you know, it kind of seems, I'm comfortable kind of giving the. The okay with this given, you know, all these things that we discussed over the past couple of weeks, so that being, you know. The licensing software, you know, the, the hiring and et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, public safety, the only real change there was. The emergency management. We went back down. And that, you know, just. Maybe we're not at the point where we want to start adding options for emergency management. There is a little bump for the fire marshal and his stipend.
Sixty-four dollar. Because I think we just said two forty-eight.
And then valley shore emergency communications, that's the assessment we get for being part of. Their operations.
You know, that four percentage, the increase in there.
Yeah.
Got it, okay. Yeah, and again, for public safety, you know, again, I, you know, I, I think now with that. I think the way that is, i- i- it's good.
Yeah.
It's good. I'm, I'm okay with that. So highway.
Big changes are in. F T Es and. Obviously, expectations for overtime for snow and special. Not budgeted in this is any contracting changes. Because it's kind of hard to know. Okay, what, when don't we need a guy when we're adding a guy? Because there might be that specialized thing that is done that. You need to contract out for leasing equipment.
Just a, just a general question, Gina, so on the snow removal, so you made a comment here that. Five K will be added with a new full-time public works employee. Is, is that what we, we would anticipate if we had another employee for overtime? To me, I don't know if it makes sense, but would you? Would, would you express less overtime, snow removal pay with another full-time employee?
No, overtime is paid to the employees, so less. I mean, you, you, someone might argue you'd have less outside contractors, but. That is, we still haven't nailed that down. But that, so that extra money represents overtime that we would pay our employees.
Yeah.
I see.
Yes.
I can't speak to that. We would really need to have the.
I could not be, you know, I might not be thinking about it in the right way, but. If you have another employee, it would seem that overtime opportunities would be less.
Ah, ah, I understand. When they are plowing, that is overtime.
Okay, I see.
Yes.
So if there, if our public's work guys are in the truck moving snow, it's already overtime for them. Didn't know that.
If it's an outside of business regular.
Yes. I'll give you a little insight. I can kind of understand where you're coming from. The one F T E that you're gonna put in there is going to take away. One of the three outside contractors that drive three of our trucks. So we hire three bodies to drive three of our trucks. By you putting a F T E in there is going to take away that expense of one of those three, so you can kind of. If you want to look at what it would cost for one of the drivers, outside drivers to drive our truck versus. So there's going to be some cost savings by having that F T E to offset that, so I understand where you're going, is it going to? Most of the snow work is overtime, of course, but it usually doesn't happen during the day. It happens at night, weekends.
We send a memo, we have snow.
So it offsets the contract.
Yeah, exactly. We, we hire three drivers to drive three of our trucks plus. Outside contractors with their own trucks, so. By hiring one F T E, you take away having to hire an outside driver for our vehicle. So as you add a F T E every time you take away. And then you get to the point of eventually, hopefully, that you won't have to hire any drivers for our vehicles. So we have more vehicles than we have drivers. We have to hire some to drive our own and then outside.
And then Gina, this five thousand K is just, it's just an estimate, right? And I, I know you've already given us a lot of context that. This snow budget is always moving.
I've taken a look. I just actually had to compile overtime for each, each individual for a worker's comp audit. And that's, that's a reasonable number for what we've been seeing in the last couple of years. Now, it could dramatically change one way or the other. If it doesn't snow or if it snows. So, you know, it's, it's, it's an average, it's a guess.
Okay.
Fine, hold on, throw the dart. You're gonna hit the board, but where are you at the board?
Got it. Thank you, Gina. Okay, so that section on highway removal, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah.
And then the highway wages, again, you know, we, we spent quite a bit of time, you know, talking about this, you know, that. I think probably the best thing moving forward is probably to get the public works another full-time. One thing too, that, you know, just as, as a quick aside to that, if. You know, and, and again, I, I just says if I imagine hovering in your shoes, you know, all the things that you have to do and all this crazy stuff that. If, if any sort of like hiring takes place, you know, and you want like a hiring committee. Or someone to assist, you know, please think of myself and. And you're all, just because, you know, again, it's, since we're all a little bit greener, you know, I think if we lean into each other on stuff like this. I think it would just be helpful, you know, so not all that false you, you know, we can kind of provide some.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, so. And then the O T special, yeah, okay.
That's just.
So I, I, I do like the highway other, you know, because it's generally, you know, I, I think it's just things that they need. So I, I really don't have any sort of major, you know, questions, you know, on this. And I know things like diesel fuel are always kind of bouncing around and gasoline and lubricants and all that stuff, but. And that beaver control always kind of just. It's just kind of gets me. One question that I did have was on the traffic control line. What is that fifteen hundred? For, I may have asked.
We, we have not, no, we have, we have not used that in a while, but there were times when there were. Projects that required someone out there to flag, and we had to hire outside contractors to do it. We haven't done it in a while. That's what that's for.
I see. Got it, okay.
So like, I'll use the, a made up example, if you know, you have Green Hill, work being done there, you have to have somebody flagging it. Or back with, when I remember driving around, there was somebody.
Those are the contracts that have been done lately, that's a change, literally, we have used it a couple of years. We tried to incorporate that into the project.
Costs.
It's a project cost, so either the contractor's stone is required to have the flaggers. Means the staffing issue that we have, of course, we can't take the two, we're all certified to flag. But you can't take us to put us out there. So that's why we had to have that line, and we have used in some bigger instances. One or two of us and some outside flaggers depending on the job, but that's what that line is.
There's just a highway.
Highway is over. Yep, now we're on.
Sanitation.
Sanitation and health.
And the big change here is simply the upping of the tipping fees. With.
We didn't make any adjustments.
No.
So with, you know, and again, I, I, I apologize if there's repetitiveness in, in my questions, but with the, so now with the. Now having that one full. Now having that one full-time, new one full-time employee in public works. Is this the line, this contracted hauling that could potentially be reduced as a result of having that one FTE?
That is the line that, you know. You will probably see some reduction in, however, you know, if the truck needs repairs or. I don't know. Both, two of the guys are attacked by a rabbit beaver.
I want to get you a beaver head.
I want one. Comfortable.
Hey, I want one too, dude.
That's it though, watch out.
I, I, I guess what I'm doing by asking this question, it's.
Trying to project where the.
Where, where could we, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and that's absolutely one of the things that we'll be working on through the year to figure out, okay. This is where we've saved some money, this is where we've, but in formulating this budget. We've also tried to be as conservative as possible in our estimations of. One, what savings will happen, and two, what the expenses will be. So you might see some overage in. What the expenses might be estimated, aside from areas where, you know, we know what the hard cost is going to be. Some things.
And then the. So the, the tipping fees, so if.
Are the municipal solid.
Okay, got it, okay. And then the, the tipping fees for the bulky waste disposal.
That is separate.
Okay, okay, got it.
I think that's a separate contract from Mira, so they're not as impact, they're not impacted by years changes, but, you know. Who knows in the future what happens with trash? That's. An area where there's probably going to be a lot of movement in the state in the next few years. And as part of River Cog's responsibilities. River Cog has been looking at what the future holds for trash in the county.
Got it.
Not that county's.
Logically, okay, not even that. So yeah, I am, I, I'm good with that. So the tipping fees are there. One thing that I, I just am just curious about, you know, it's the, our tire disposal. Gina, do we have any actuals of where we are currently with our tires in this budget?
You mean, what, what?
Yeah, are we over six thousand yet?
Current budget, hold on.
Just kind of curious where we are.
You know what happens after eight o'clock? Everything slows down. They must be doing backups on the system. So every time I'm working after eight o'clock, everything slows down.
My brain slows down too, so don't worry. Because, you know, again, I'm, I'm just kind of curious, you know, as going through the budget.
I just can't find the line here. Tip tires. No, we're only forty percent in.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, I think, I, I think they pull, I don't know if that's the right word, but I don't think it's, it's not a monthly. It's might be three or four times a year.
Okay, okay, got it. Almost through, page seven. So it's under sanitation and health.
The, the largest part of that is just tipping fees. We actually had a reduction in our district assessment, which is nice. A next conservation and land use.
Okay with it because there's a nice zero number there. So the, so the, the, the recreation, so the, the, just, again, like I. I'm, I'm going to discuss kind of these lines. I, I know they kind of appear like small chunks of money, but you know, again, I'm kind of on this thing of like. You know, five thousand bucks is five thousand bucks. I'm just kind of curious that. That we pay someone a salary to gatekeep.
So that's monitoring the gates, closing them after dusk. These are the individuals who are responsible for this are. Live right next to or close enough to the solace themselves that. That's a very minor stipend.
It's ten dollars a day.
Yeah.
I mean, again, and, and just kind of like thinking about it, like I, I, I'm thinking like, again, I'm going to public works does a lot of stuff. You know, but I mean, that's something that, I'm just, again, I'm kind of thinking, you know, like.
I understand.
Seven three hundred, it's like, shoot, you know.
I, I understand, yeah.
That's kind of where I am with that.
I heard who was that?
Remember.
At ten dollars a day, is that what I heard?
Yeah.
If, if we're sending, if we're sending a, a, a public works employee out there after their eight hours. You know, we're talking about time and a half, uh, at a much higher rate.
Yeah.
So yeah, I like the idea, like maybe Monday through Friday or they open it and they don't close it. I don't know, but there's a possibility there, but. But don't lose sight of the fact that we're paying much higher rate, hourly rate.
No, yeah, sure, sure, sure. And, and again, me kind of like critiquing all these things, you know, it's, it's within the greater context of like. The school budget coming down, you know, all these other, so I'm just trying to think, you know, it's like, okay, where can we? If it's possible or if there's some flexibility, you know, would it be, because you know, you read that, you know, gatekeeper, you know, nothing, you know, nothing against that. If you're the gatekeeper or anything.
I'm just wondering why we have a gatekeeper. Why do we close the gates?
Yeah.
It is a question, I think there's liability.
Why, why do we, I think, I think we're probably protecting the, some of those fields from kids going in there making donuts on. Sorry?
Parmally has no gates.
Donuts, making donuts.
Yeah, but they're not, well, they're not, they're not, they're not ball fields. They're not soccer fields. They're not. So there, the, the, there's something to. They also don't have security cameras. Parmally has security cameras.
Right.
So, yeah, there. It is something to look at, yes, but.
Because again.
Why, why do we do something?
Because that's seventy-three hundred bucks, you know, it's, again, you know, one line, seventy-three hundred, you know, I mean, that's. Again, like, you know, it, it, going through a few lines, identified this, you know, there's already kind of a nice.
And I, I understand that, yeah, it's just.
Yeah, I don't want to overwork other departments, you know, but just in terms of like inefficiency. Thing, I wonder if there could be a more.
Asking why we do something after.
Is there a more efficient mechanism or this, so maybe something in the future to kind of like.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, exactly. All right, so let's see, continuing on recreation. And again, you know, I mean, this line is, is nice because you have that little. Negative there.
Well. I remind you that we had the late.
Oh, right.
So.
Then trash carting there, just.
Switzer and utilization.
Any other?
Are there any other trash company? It.
I'm just thinking, you know.
That's been a.
That was a. Bizzuto Brothers, I think, or.
Well, you get into the question of who's a subcontractor of the larger company, so like, for example. I think Switzer has some subcontractors. And I think all waste has some subcontractors. I don't know who they are. And this was a question that I think we had on Board of Education fair amount where. What sort of movement is there in the trash world? No pun intended.
Could these be one, so.
This is something that we bid out, I believe, if I recall correctly, so.
Could these be one of these lines where, again, like, not to put more work on other departments, I'm not picking on public works or anything like that, but.
I hear where you're going.
That trash carting, you know, is that something that?
It, it, it's one of those things to consider. There are other towns that, you know, do in-house trash collecting. But those towns also have a lot more staffing in public works. It, it's, it's really a question of. What does? Public works take on? So for example, if there are other towns, if I recall correctly. That do the sort of trash collecting, also do the lawn mowing and, you know, they have their own little subdivision of. Park and Recreation or whatever they call it. And so. It's one of those questions, what does the future of public works look like? Do, do we get more? Think Madison and Clinton sort of do. Does that work?
Because that might be some homework for us.
Future, yeah.
You know, as, you know, I mean, even in the now almost, you know, where, you know, hiring the foreman, you know, hiring. The new full-time employee, it might be real, it might be avenues to have this sort of. Discussion here, because again, in a couple of these places, it seems that we may be able to, and again, even if it's. Ten thousand dollars, you know, ten thousand boxes. Ten thousand bucks. So I understand we're kind of doing two separate things, so you know, so like one is just this budget document that we can get to the Board of Finance. But then also I hope to that we're kind of identifying areas that then we can, as a board later on, kind of discuss in terms of. Implementation, you know, how does it look moving forward, et cetera, et cetera. So then maybe next budget season. These numbers can be adjusted as a result of.
Yes.
Things that we put in place, you know, what we expect public works to do, you know, job description, you know, so they kind of do. Again, kind of going back to this data-driven, okay, this is what we're doing, this is what we can save, et cetera.
So one, one thing that I kind of, might be helpful to think about is a budget is sort of a living document in that. Yes, you set your budget. But you are recognizing, you have to recognize that things within that budget. May and probably will change, and so.
Sure.
It's, it's a guideline. Looking at how you're doing things, like if you. I use the household example, even though I hate using household examples for governmental comparison. You change on all the lights to LEDs and, you know, you invest in that energy efficient fridge. You can expect, you know, to see cost change on electricity. Or, you know, you insulate the house a little bit better, what have you, or you just turn down the heat as well, use less and so. How you adjust the budget changes in the year as you think of it. Well, do I think it's worth doing this or that? How do I do it better? And so, yes, that's a lot of work that's going to have to happen, but it comes through the year as we do it, so. Point is taken.
Okay. Community services, we're, we're kind of nearing the end here. Thank you. I, I, I appreciate us going through all these kind of stepwise here. We already kind of did quite a bit of, of discussion here. So the, you know, one that again kind of pops out at me is the dog fund support. I know we had some, Nancy, when you were still at the helm, there was some, you guys had to do some upgrading to. The dog pound facility, you guys had a trench in you.
Yes, that.
Can I, can I? Can I interrupt that, 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 that expense would not have hit this line? That, that, that would have been charged off to just general repairs for the town campus, but. This is a line that supports the overall budget of the, 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 the animal control. Uh, operation, so it's the electricity, it's the salary for the, uh, animal control officer. It's what we pay to the state for, and that's a flow, that's money in and money out because there's a revenue that comes in. And then it goes out to the state and there's an exhibit that I can send you again, if you'd like to see it, but this. We had a surplus for years in that account and we were slowly consuming it. And now we need to fund it every year for what it costs us to have that, have that department running, which again includes the salary. For the animal control officer.
Okay, so that, that's what I'm seeing this reflection here, this four thousand.
Yeah.
The fifteen point four percent increase.
Yes, I, yes, I know, I can show you what it's actually cost us to run that facility and that's, that's. Now what we're looking at on an annual basis.
Okay, so it's around thirty thousand dollars for all of that process, okay.
Person, the reimbursement, kibble, the electricity. Yeah.
Okay. Space, town organizations, the River Cog, just seems that's what we have to give them.
Yeah, and that assessment is based on town population and. There's another metric that was used to determine what that increase was, and I am drawing a blank on what it was. I think it was CPI related.
So on, on the, the town organizations, you know, as. Had that long flight back from, why I had a lot of thinking time on there. So. Of course, we already discussed community on aging. And I, I, I think it's totally appropriate to give them a five hundred dollar, you know, for their, you know. Programming, you know, kind of whatever they, they need to do with, with that. Um, one thing that, you know, kind of hit me a little bit was, I, I know we're taking nine seventy out of the Palmer Lee Farm Committee. Um, but we also have the library as well as youth and family services. I kind of feel if we're going to cut from one, that E word is kind of sticking out at me, that equity kind of word. I wonder if we treat them all the same. That if we're going to take away from one, I, I say we either don't take away from anyone, or if we take away from one. I feel like we got to take away some from others. And again, it's not for me to nickel and dime anything, but just in terms of like. You know, fairness, and I also know that, you know, we do own Palmer Lee Farm, you know, and that is ours. So that's just my comment, you know, on, on that one. You know, the youth and family services, they're asking for ninety-three, I mean, sorry, ninety-six, and then the library, I forget what the library is asking for. But you know, since they're all kind of these town organizations that rely on us to treat them all equitably, I think would just be, be fair.
I'm not opposed to that.
Opposed to what?
To keeping the town's contributions to the library, flat and. Uh, youth and family services.
And I, I think.
Because there are other funding avenues for both of those. I'll pick on youth and family services for a second, simply because. There is opioid money coming in. Let me rephrase that. Opioid settlement money coming in.
Yeah, I was like, wait. Jamie, you know.
Racing. And so there are opportunities because youth and family services does make the most sense as. The organization that handles that sort of work. Where some of that, directing some of that funding to them would make sense. You have to use that money for certain purposes, sort of like the NIPS fund that we've. We talked about a long time ago. And then. I know that the library has. There's been an ongoing conversation with the Board of Finance about revenue streams and. How to handle the library's funding. So I'm, I'm not opposed to. Keeping their contributions from the town flat in this year. It, it's not a.
That we have, you know, going on, I mean, so if, if we were to do that, you know, that would be twenty-eight hundred. Thirty-eight hundred, generally the nine seventy, and then the library.
Eleven, three hundred.
Why can't I find, oh, and here's the library, so basically, you know.
How much money did she say?
No, the library is eighty-five hundred. Yeah, so eighty-five, so we would basically get eighty-five hundred.
That's a little bit three hundred.
So we, we would, you know, we're, we're getting about eleven hundred bucks, you know.
It is.
Which is a sizable kind of, and again, I, partly I think if, you know. I would like to treat those three the, the same, but also as well.
They're not the same.
It's, it's true.
Yeah.
It's true. It's true.
Please, speak up.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, Parmally is not the library or HK. Parmally is like Park and Rec. So you either treat them all the same. Park and Rec is flat this year, Parmally is flat this year. We are not the library and we are not HK Rec. We are a town property. I'm, I'm sorry you don't understand that.
Fully understand that.
Okay, that's why I asked you to speak up.
No, I, I fully, that's why I. I, I completely understand all. I, I completely understand all, you know, I, I I wish I sort of had this information be- before you made that sort of, but suggestion amendments when we were making these amendments to be cause I, I suggested these things when we have those narratives in front of us, when we have those presentations, because library certainly probably provides a service to the town, it's a town property, it provides the service that I think we all know what Palmerly, but it doesn't provide this um, youth and family services are just, it's just a different organization that provides different things to the community. And I hate to see those being treated the same, just on a, we do this for this, we do this.
No, no, I understand that.
So I don't want to make decisions based on, on that. Um, same thing with the library. And the rec.
The rec is an open question then. We have an additional funding request to better reflect
Correct.
Estimated costs of buts.
So I would hate to just make those sort of blanket cuts based on, well, this for this, but that. I, based on a
No, I, yeah, I'm not.
Delegation. If the Board of Finance chooses to do that, I understand that, then I certainly would understand where love to be part of, see that conversation and how that conversation evolves.
Right.
What do you guys think?
Kind of torn, because as was said, they are different things, they do serve different functions. And it does kind of get back to the point of that was made or that I made last week of, are we cutting for the sake of getting a number? Versus, you know, are we cutting because we have estimates of costs and so on and so forth. Um, I don't know. And part of me thus wants to kick it to Board of Finance because I, I, I can go either way and I'm not sure exactly what pushes me in one direction or the other at this moment. Um, I, I can see other avenues for funding them, which but at the same time, that's not
Cause with the, you know.
That falls under Board of Finance, but.
I, I, I definitely want to I, I might set up an example when I did the assessor thing and kicked it off to the assessor, you know, like I, you know, I, I definitely think that we should come to some sort, you know, of like consensus about it. Um, and, you know, again, like not to like pick on these, you know, cause I know there's a lot of like
Yes.
Feeling that goes behind, you know, to the, the, these places. Um, but you know, one of the things, so like with the library, for example, you know, I mean, they have a- and I know there are different funding streams, you know, that they have available with their own stipulations, you know, but with, you know, an endowment of
We, we want to be careful about how we phrase that, but yes.
Um, I, I, I'm just trying to, you know, again, like there are needs, you know, and, and, and I guess let me step back and say, I don't want not to treat them all the same, because they all do provide
Please understand, I understand, I understand where you're coming from on this.
But you know, just, you know, a- again, I'm, it, it's that kind of balance of, you know, and, you know, certainly, you know, I, I want to recognize, you know, kind of the work that Palmerly, you know, does, that, you know, to acknowledge that it is a town property, we do have certain obligations to Palmerly Farm. Um, and a lot of it, you know, is volunteer driven as well, you know, like we don't cut their grass, like we don't do like any sort of that stuff. So within all of that context, you know, I think it kind of just makes it acutely extra kind of like sensitive.
Yes.
Um, so that, that was kind of my consensus, if you're gonna do to one.
I understand.
Then let's do two, to kind of, you know, a- again, like there's already kind of this perception of like favoritism, you know, kind of falls along this line. Um, so I, again, and, and even with the library, you know, with, you know, yeah, it's just a percentage, but there's eighty-five hundred bucks, you know, right, right there. Um, again, you know, with their, with the fund, you know, again, like Palmerly has it too, they have their activities fund and, and all this, but you know.
No.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd be happy to speak to all of this if you've had any questions at all.
So.
I it's not a matter of kicking it to the finance, right? I think based on, I'll just say sort of bottom line where I was like with all of the weeks long of them. Narratives we received and conversations we've had with each other, um, at meetings with directors, with all of the narratives I read, I was pretty comfortable sending this budget, um, with these amendments
Okay.
at a seven percent
Okay.
Um, to the Board of Minutes.
Okay.
That's where I was.
Okay. Okay.
Some of those amendments were, were difficult. There's no question about it.
Okay.
Cool. I'm sitting in similar position. Tragedy case counselor, unfortunately.
Unsuccessful. Um, okay, so, um, moving on, um, I think.
That brings us
I think that brings us to
Is it
To the end here, yes, so we're
We have the holding position for EPAS related expenses, so don't expect it to be one dollar.
Yeah.
Don't expect that to be one dollar.
Find that somewhere.
Uh, yes, but those funding streams are already sort of identified.
Okay.
Yes, got it. There is grant money available through the state and federal government for treating.
I think it was helpful going through all.
But yeah, that being said though, Eric, like points that you raised as far as sort of conversations starters as we either manage this budget or go into the next budget are certainly well noted.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Yes.
Um, so with that, you know, I, I, I felt it was helpful in a couple of ways. One, you know, for me, you know, again, just it being all new, you know, kind of going through it. Um, and I just kind of, you know, now I can sleep at night, you know, knowing that like
You can sleep at night.
Well, that's got a glass of wine as well, right? But, um, but you know, again, I, I, you know, and not to I, I think Jamie does a great job with the minutes, you know, but I also felt it would be helpful that all this was just captured, you know, in the minutes, you know, that we basically went through section by section and had our discussion and
Good luck, Jamie.
You can always reach out to me, Jamie, if you need clarification. Um, but yeah.
So that's all. All that said.
All that said.
We do have to sort of put our rubber stamp on it and um, I do have the motions prepared.
Okay, great.
So, thank you Gina for helping with this. Um, so and just to be clear, because we've been on the budget for an hour now and my brain has lost track of the time since meeting space. Um.
Go ahead.
We didn't make any changes to it.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that just means that the dollars, dollar values hold. All right, so can I get a motion to recommend to the Board of Finance, operating expenditures totaling six you guys can just do second.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's just go ahead.
Operating expenditures totaling six million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, sixty-one dollars as detailed in the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget.
Second thought. No, you have to make, oh, I'll make that motion first. So, yeah.
Okay. All those, any further discussion on this?
I think we had a good one. Yeah, I'll just reiterate some of the points that you raised for us.
Okay.
Certainly well worth discussion as we
Yes.
As we had a form then, sort of manage a living document.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Oh, we didn't talk about the capital budget. We've already talked about, discussed the capital budget in previous meetings. Um. Were there any changes, further changes?
One, I, I, I think this kind of just overlaps all in, 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 in general. Um, the what do we know, you know, now that here we are at seven percent, you know, with this operating budget? How does this interact with the municipal cap? That the state has that if we go over last year's budget by X amount, um, we get less return on Gina, do you, do you have any of that context or any of that information about the municipal cap?
Yes, yes, but it's not directly related to the capital, you're going back to operating now. And, um, there's, the, they, they have two numbers, one is this two and a half percent or the rate of inflation and the state determines what this inflation number is. And I think it's in the six percent somewhere range. And yes, we went over it now for a couple of years, but there was no penalty. Now they're saying that the municipal revenue sharing will be affected. I have yet to see us be affected, so um, we're talking less, I want to say, uh, if I'm picking up the right number, hold on a second, I just want to get to the cover here, a hundred and fifty-five thousand is what the potential impact is, and there's some formula about um, uh, you know, fifty percent of the amount that's over, and I, I haven't actually run the numbers, but I don't think it can exceed the hundred and fifty-six thousand. I don't know where we stand, whether they, whether they've modified that penalty or not, because it really doesn't make any sense, it doesn't solve any problem. It's very frustrating.
Just penalizes the towns for trying to, you know, manage their budgets and pay for the things they need to pay without
So, so we still don't know what we're looking at with the seven percent in terms of what's like, that's gonna do to that cap?
I, the wor- the worst case scenario would be about a hundred and fifty-six thousand, less than state revenue, if I'm interpreting it right. They said it affects the municipal revenue sharing grant.
Okay.
Which?
Actually, the municipal revenue sharing grant's only five thousand, one forty-eight.
Yeah, that
But, um, I, I, I did do some research, I pulled up the, I had sent the board some email, uh, uh, an email with all of the, uh, you know, what, what I understood the, the issues to be, and then the most recent, um, email from OPM about the current rates of inflation. So, uh, like I said, I haven't heard anything else since, I have not, we did receive our municipal revenue sharing this year, so, I don't know.
Okay. Okay. And, and Gina, I just have a question about capital and kind of where that money sits and goes, so the big, I think the, the, the big expense in our capital, right, is the, that fire truck at one point two million. But it's very possible by the time that gets specked out and bitted and built, that could be at least if not more than a year and a half away. Um, or more, right, two, three years away before we like receive and have to pay for that truck. Where does the one point two sit between now and that?
Um, we haven't done this in a while to this, to this degree, um, and way, way back when we would lease them, it would be a short-term lease. And, uh, so you would pay it back over, you know, three or four years. So that's a possibility if the Board of Finance thinks that's the way to go, but i- if, if the money were avail, if we it would, the money would sit in the capital reserves if it was available.
If it is that long way, if it is two, three or more years, that's something maybe for the Board of Finance will take up, but but if it's something we can sort of save for ourselves.
We need to, we need to earmark it. Uh, I mean, maybe you kick it, i- i- if we're sure we're not gonna be spending anything on that next year, then you, you could kick it, I guess, maybe that's something for the fire department to answer, but I, um,
I presume some does come in quickly though.
I would think, but I don't think we're gonna see the truck probably for a good, I'm gonna say three, yeah, like from now, I'm gonna say three.
I think we want to ask them that question. Um, I don't think it's that long.
Okay, thank you.
But, uh, yeah, okay.
Fire marshal is one of the ones that puts the trucks together, Board of Finance.
Yeah, installing for
and probably one point two to one point four.
Is in the um.
Yeah, so, so with, so looking at that pumper, or so the, the pumper eight fifty-one, um, so requesting the one point two, four, four, six, four, three. Um, that BOS adjustment, I, I just see empty, so I, I'm assuming that we're gonna maintain that for the twenty-four, twenty-five
Yeah.
capital budget.
I thought that was sort of
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, you know, cause that's basically one of the biggest drivers, you know, of this.
If that wasn't there, it opens the door for
You know, but I mean, it's
Many of the other things, if not all.
Um, but you know, I, I've kind of already expressed this, that, you know, I, I feel when it comes to the, the fire company, you know, I mean, number one is protection of town assets, you know, those things aren't cheap. I know we discussed like the leasing option, I know that's done in the past, but, you know, probably over the long term, we'll be paying more, you know, for that. Um, so it's, i- i- it's just one of those, tho- tho- those tough ones, you know, because it's, you know, if we don't do it this year, I mean, the only thing we're gonna be doing it is just kicking it down, and then by the time we kick it down from the one point two, you know, go up to one point five, you know, one point eight, so there's, you know, there, there's a part of it, I think this is something that has to be swallowed. Um,
I agree.
The, you know, when it comes to the fire company, I mean, I think certainly that's the most important
Yeah.
you know, piece of it. Um, where, you know, some other capital items, you know, there, you know, I, I saw that we, you know, made the adjustment to the inflatable boat rescue. Um, um. A couple of things, it's, you know, and now kind of in the next iteration, I kind of know I won't be afraid to ask for them to come back, you know, with, with a couple more questions. Um, you know, but I'm just kind of curious to, you know, the, the security system, you know, do they is fifteen thousand that number, you know, is that really what's needed? Um, certainly I want to give it to them, you know, but if there's any sort of like, you know, discernment of, you know, look, six, two thousand here, five thousand there, you know, it's just kind of one of those, but
I think that was one of the things that when we were talking about pricing out, they did mention that they could yeah, piecemeal it out somewhat, but what that would look like and whether, remember, this is just what we're proposing as, and they'll be going through this with Board of Finance soon.
You know, one thing that I did mention, you know, like, you know, I, I, I understand space, you know, is tight. You know, so, you know, fourteen-two for rack storage. Um, you know, my one question that was kind of lingering was, you know, with how much space would they get for, you know, fourteen thousand dollars? You know, it's, will they have enough to store all their equipment, you know, et cetera? But again, like I, you know, I I'm, I'm confident within the, the killing of the fire, the fire company that they're doing the due diligence to really kind of, you know, get the price that they think that they need. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm definitely okay with, um, these requests. Uh, I think one thing that we could look at is, you know, maybe get a better sense of how critical the rescue boat is, cause certainly I want to give the volunteer fire company the things that they need, they're the experts, you know, they know what they, you know, but of course, my question is, okay, how many water rescues do we have then?
Yeah.
But I, but I understand the logic of if it happens
Did it.
to have that piece of equipment.
Yeah.
Um, so probably that's something that we can, you know, if we're taking it out this year, you know, I don't want to say it's gone forever, but it could be something that we look at again, you know, next year.
And yeah, and for all of these, it's not a question of you're gone forever, it's a question of, is this the right year?
Correct.
Sure. Given the
One point two, four, four.
And all the road projects.
Yeah.
Uh, Emmanuel Church has particularly become a
Another day adventure.
Yes.
Speeding down Emmanuel Church, is that what's going on?
Yeah. Welcome. Yeah. Um, so there are some priorities here that we need to take care of. Um, but that said, we could go through these one by one, but are we comfortable with where we sit? Are there any? Are there any big questions about all the items here? Or?
One of them that I did have in 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 general, you know, I'm I'm. You know, just to kind of, again, so with with the highway department with the mulch head attachment, are we gonna? Is that being removed or are we delaying it? What what's the status on that?
I think that one is what one that we were moving to a future.
Okay, so it's not just like out and done.
That's a sim- that's similar for all of these, um, so I'll go back to since Warren Public Works, the Highway Garage. That that's a question that because of the situation on the town campus with remediation of. Yes, we need to repave grade and do all that work at some point.
Cause I also saw that line as well. So i- i- is that something that? If we don't do it this year.
Is the cost going to go up significantly?
I mean, one is the cost, but you know, also is that, is there any impediment to? Public Works getting their equipment in and out, plows in and out.
When I talked to Walter, when we first went through the requests. The sense I got was that. Putting it out further is not going to have any significant oper- impact on operations. But it is one of those things where it's like there is a little bit of a ticking of the clock on. It has to be done in the near future, but it's again, it's one of those. Do you want to do it? And then. You.
Sure.
It's kind of like peeling up carpet. What do you find underneath the carpet? Is it linoleum or is it hardwood?
You know, and and then just similar things to, you know, to I certainly don't want to ignore, you know, these requests, you know, so the the. Pavilion expansion and the trail improvement for Parmally. We, these aren't necessarily being deleted. It's just, you know, we can move these to.
Yes, and you know, there are lots of projects that are in some of their vote in multi-year plan and. Again, we're going to be talking about the multi-year plan. Probably at another special meeting or two. Just to figure out where do we put these projects? How comfortable are we in certain year, having them in certain years, so on and so forth? It is. It really is a question of. When do you do it? When you implement it? Yeah, yeah, that's the. That's the reclaiming the pavement and the.
I would think the same kind of thing. Yeah, I still necessarily not.
All that said. Are we comfortable with where we are on capital, recognizing that? Now, we're really what we're doing at this point is handing off to Board of Finance to. Check our homework, check our units. Figure out how to pay for everything. They might add some of this stuff back. They might.
Sure.
You know.
We're gonna have to do a little bit of magic here with the capital, because it's.
Yeah. Okay.
We have to have an action item.
Yes, we do. All that said. I would like to have a motion to recommend to Board of Finance capital expenditures totaling. Two million five hundred twenty eight thousand two hundred and forty eight. Dollars as detailed in the proposed fiscal year twenty four twenty five capital budget. There any further discussion?
Just wanted to just clarify one thing on the pickleball points. Um, so it's for one twenty five and. Is that, that's. Has any ARPA been included in there? Because I think if I recall correctly at the prior.
Have the answer for that question. So. This number is not inclusive of the ARPA funding that's. Is going to town meeting on the twenty fifth. This number is also an old number that doesn't take into account. Newer estimates on the cost.
Yeah.
And. Some of the design has already been done for such a facility.
Okay.
I say facility, it's not much facility, it's. Of course. So.
Twenty five, are you saying that it could be more?
No. It will be less, it should be less than that.
Okay.
Okay, hearing no further discussion. Uh, all those in favor of. The motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed unanimously. Okay. Lena. Because now as next steps, this is going to Board of Finance included will be the narrative. Um, which you received today. And from there. To do the budget process until we go to town meeting in. At some point, we're going to have to have special meetings uh, to discuss multi-year capital line.